Good evening, and welcome to the Victoria Planning Commission meeting for June 17th, 2021. I'd just like to make an announcement that tonight's meeting is being simultaneously televised on TV 15 for anyone that may want to watch it. The first item on the agenda is citizen communication. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll work, move on to our items with public hearings. Our first item is a variance for the Hall addition. May we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Commissioner. So tonight, the first variance that you will be considering is a request for a variance as the property located at the southeast corner of Nuasis and North Liberty Streets. The property, or the applicant, is requesting a variance from Section 21-9B of the Victoria City Code, which requires that prior to the issuance of a building permit, that a property must be platted for commercial development. This property is approximately 5,084 square feet in size. And so, as I said, the applicant is requesting a variance to the plating requirement in order to develop the property with a commercial building that's approximately 7,500 square feet in size, that actually has a footprint of 5,000 square feet. So they are requesting a variance in order to not plat and therefore not apply setback regulations that would be applied to commercial properties. Additionally, in the plating requirement or process, they would have to seek additional variances because commercial lots are required to have a minimum square footage of 10,000 square feet in size, rather than 5,084 square feet, that the size of this parcel is currently. Staff does not recommend approval of this variance because of the scale of the proposed use. As you know, we've done a lot of lot size variances, especially with the General Land Office. And if you remember, we are always talking about scale and saying, you know, in our recommendation that all of the other development requirements would be meet, would be met when we are recommending approval in those situations. In this situation, with a 5,000-square-foot footprint, building footprint, on a 5,084-square-foot lot, the other regulations that we're always speaking of would not be able to be met. And think that's other considerations such as site triangle, loading-unloading zones, parking areas, landscaping, of course setbacks, even setbacks for freestanding size is a minimum of 10 foot off of a property line. So when you start applying all of the development regulations, we're looking at a lot more variances than just the requests to variance from the plating requirement. And a lot of those things come up in the site planning process. So for those reasons, staff believes that the scale of this proposed use is just too much for this lot, even though, you know, it's a wonderful idea, it's a wonderful use for the theater. But in this, for this lot, it's just too big of a development for the lot to handle when you apply all of the city's development standards for commercial properties. Furthermore, we have a lot of legacy situations in town where you have buildings that were built prior to the city having these regulations. And so we see some of the problems that come when a property is overbuilt and doesn't have the adequate parking. And sometimes we find uses that fit those properties, and oftentimes, there's uses that do not fit those properties and then become nuisances for the neighborhoods. So for all of those reasons, staff does recommend denying this variance request.
Are there any questions for the staff? Let's open, oh, go ahead, Dr. Hunt.
My question would be, what would, or what are you requesting or suggesting that they do, since you wanted this was to be denied?
Find a larger lot for the scale of development that they are proposing, or trim back the development drastically, to be able to meet those other requirements.
Any other questions at the staff? Thank you. Open it up for discussion. Anybody have comments? I mean, I guess, I'll go out there. I've got some concerns in terms of parking. If you're going to be unloading and loading significant items, then the trucks would be in the street. I mean, I agree that I'm all for Theater Victoria having a storage area, but I think it should be one that's safe and meets the requirements of the area. I don't know about anybody else, but...
I agree with you. I think it could also become, at times, maybe a makeshift workroom, workshop, if they're working on a set piece.
With people being there and...
And then the parking's going to be an even bigger issue than just when they're unloading and loading.
And safety of people going in and out.
But this is a public hearing?
Right. At this time, I'd like to open this item up for a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this issue? Yes, sir. Come to the front, please. If you just give us your name, and then...
My name is Mike Luster, and I am the person proposing for this. Let me, and I understand exactly what you're saying. And at the time that this application was submitted, we were not exactly sure of how many square feet this property occupied. We went through the field notes, we got our architect involved in it. And actually, what has happened as a result of that is the actual project that we're planning and that we have the drawings for, I was trying to get those sent over here quickly enough before, I was driving down from Austin, couldn't get them here soon enough for them to review. However, the actual facility that we're proposing is a total of about 4,500 square feet. The footprint on the bottom is now, well, actually, I have, I have the drawings right here, which I'd be, I don't know if you guys, I can pass them around, you can see the actual footprint. And where the architect is taking into account the space for the parking, the access and whatever, so the footprint, instead of being 5,000 square feet, is now more like 2,500 square feet. And let me get the classes here, and I can tell you exactly. But it is a two-story facility, and so the, the, the actual, it looks like the actual dimension is, that he came up with was 60 by 50, which is right at three, a little under 3,000 square feet because of a cutout in the back corner. So as opposed to 7,500 feet, or 5,000 square feet on the bottom. So we are now substantially below what the original request was. And again, that request was made that way because we, we actually were not certain of the dimensions on that exactly. And, and so we had the architect get involved and put the drawings together on it, and try to make sure that it is somewhat fitting to the setbacks. The only issue, the biggest issue with it is two things, that this, the railroad is the only other landholder next to us there, that whole strip of property. It is a small tract, that's why it sat undeveloped for 100 years now. It may sit undeveloped for another 100 years, I don't know, unless we can find a way to, I was just, we're trying to find a constructive use for it. The theater is our, is a current tenant of ours in the other facility, which we're going to be redeveloping. And that's why we're actually trying to facilitate them with this new facility, which is actually like an upgrade from the space that we're, that currently have right now. And so this, in the interest of that, and trying to keep the, something that is located well for them, for their operation and their use, this, we had this tract, and we said, well, this is maybe a good workout that could be put to better use, to do something good for the community as well. So I have Joe Ferguson here with the theater also. He may want to offer comment on that to give a better insight as to how they use the facility. Right now, they do occupy a lot more footage, they're looking to reduce inventory and do some other changes and things. Anyway, but this, so I don't, I don't want to have the, the project cut because of the way we initially submitted the request, because no, we're not out to, we're not out to build it without, without setbacks. It's just that the setbacks we were given, because it is on a corner, it's on a dead corner, actually, because Nuasis Street no longer passes through the railroad track there, so it's, there's a dead piece of street there with no traffic to speak of. You know, we did want to have the, the front entrance face Nuasis Street, which it does have a current curb cut for that. It does also have a curb cut facing Liberty. But we wanted to face it to Nuasis Street for the reason that that entire paved area there is just, is just dead street, there's no, since it's been closed. And yes, they would have the, the ability to park their, their work trailer that they use to haul the sets and everything, you know, and pull into the building. It's a, it's a very easy access for them to, to be able to, you know, enter and egress safely, because again, that is a dead section of street there, they're not exiting onto Liberty Street, they're exiting onto a dead leg there. So we thought that would be the quietest, safest way to provide access to the facility with the minimum disruption of the, of the area, which is not much to disrupt, except for the railroad, because, and who does nothing with the adjoining property, and for, it's our understanding, they probably never will. But anyway, that's, that, I just, I did, I do have the, the, the plans from the architect that I could, I'd be happy to, to share by whatever means at this time, if that would facilitate and give them a better understanding of what we were actually asking for here. So I don't know if the technology's here, I have the elevations on my iPad, and I have the, the actual footprints, you know, of the, the lower and upper floors right here on the, the paper, if, if it needs to be reviewed. And I don't know, Joe, did you want to say a word, Joe?
Hi, my name is Joe Ferguson. Right now, I'm treasurer of the, of the theater board. Our current use of the space just down the block is for, primarily for storing our set pieces, our costumes and props. And then we have us, an area that we construct things for the, for the, for the stage. Our, the trailer that we use is small, it does not take a big footprint or turning radius. It's a 20-foot-long, just standard trailer that you put behind a truck. We don't have any large vehicles driving in there. All of the sets that we rent are delivered directly to the stages that we're performing at. I'm not really sure what else to say, other than this would be a nice place to have, have a location nearby where we are, and with air conditioning that we don't have right now. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Dr. Hunt?
I'll, I'll do it. Madam Chair, I would suggest that we table this issue, given the changes that are proposed.
Let us finish the public hearing, and then, then we can discuss. Any questions of either of the people who are testifying in the public hearing?
Well, my question is actually more relies for Julie, because she can only answer that, dealing with the, the structure and the map. I'm quite sure there's procedures that even though they have that, because I know, you know, we've, they have that, don't they have to go through a procedure again, and submitting that to you, to you guys, for the corrections, right?
I really think that question's better for after we close the public hearing.
I suggest that we get through the public hearing, too, and then I'll be happy to kind of go through our options.
Are there any other comments from the public on this, on this particular agenda item? Seeing none, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing and open up for council discussion, the issue. Dr. Hunt?
So, you go ahead. All right. Considering the situation here, not meeting the requirements and so forth, and their willingness to resubmit something that probably would meet the requirements, I would suggest that we table this decision and request that the applicant reapply.
Well, basically, give the, give the...
Right, so if they tabled it, they wouldn't have to reapply, they would just have to pay for an additional notification fee. But that would be, excuse me, allergies. I would suggest that as well, that would give us a time to look at and see if the lot is developable with the reduced size. The, the point of what we're trying to convey or in our recommendation is that we don't want to recommend approval of this variance, and then turn around with the site plan and have a whole subsequent host of other variances, because the scale is just too much for this lot. And so with his, you know, the actual architectural drawings, we can look at the, the scale and look at the other rules, is that, you know, ordinances such as parking and other standards as they apply, and see what other subsequent variances we may or may not be looking at, and then come back with a revised recommendation.
I think that makes sense.
It does.
If, if that's, if that's the appropriate legal issue, is to go ahead and table it at this time, and ask that it be brought back at the next meeting, after you've had a chance to look at their new proposal? Because I don't think it's fair of us to have you just sit here tonight and look at it and say, oh, we think this might, we think this might not, but...
Right, because I was trying to do some rough calculations of different, you know, setbacks and things, and it's...
I'll go ahead and make a motion if that...
Would, Dr. Hunt?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we table this, too.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
And Julie, if the 2,500 footprint that he's talking about right now, I know that you'll be able to help him out, now that, you know, that they're willing to kind of change what they're doing, to maybe find, it might be 2,200 footprint, whatever we need to do. Let's see if we can't get this lot on the rolls and, and help out the theater as well. I know you will. Thanks.
As long as it, you know, it's not just this use, it's looking at, at also subsequent uses, and so as long as it can, you know, generally function well as a commercial development, we're happy to, to recommend variances, as we usually do. They're just as a tipping point, at least.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you all. The next item on the agenda is a variance and final plat for the Bronson addition, re-subdivision number four. There we have the staff?
This is another General Land Office variance, I call them. The owner of 1514 Staten was given a conditional offer for a new home by the General Land Office. And there is, this lot was platted and, or subdivided in this, in its existing condition after subdivision ordinance went into effect in 1956, so therefore, it's not a legal lot, and does require a replat, a formal replat to be submitted to show that it's, it's two parcels. And so the property at 1514 Staten, which is, would be Lot 16RA, is the one that was given the conditional approval, and has a proposed lot size of 6,791 square feet, which meets, or actually exceeds the minimum requirement for single-family residential lots in this location. The second parcel on this property is 605 North Cleveland, and that lot only has a square footage of 3,751, which is of course below the required minimum for single-family residential homes. As you know, in historic districts, we have a 4,000-square-foot minimum for cottage lots. This is not in a historic district, but it is a very old part of town, and a smaller lot is not out of character for this neighborhood. And again, this, the 605 North Cleveland is not proposing to be redeveloped, but once you apply all the setbacks with the, the new plat, it could be redeveloped into a perfectly adequate single-family residential home sign. So for those reasons, staff does recommend approving these variance.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on this variance request. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address it? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion today. I think this is pretty much what we've had with people coming back in, that have had to destroy places and rebuild. It looks to me like it's pretty much in order of the neighborhood. Any, do we have a motion on the variance?
We approve.
Approved?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the variance and final plat for the Texas Hinton subdivision, re-subdivision number two.
This has been a long time coming, I can't tell you how many times I've looked at this site since the city sold it about seven years ago. But it is finally moving forward onto development. So this is a variance to the minimum lot width for commercial lots. Lots, there's proposing to subdivide this property into eight lots, in which lots five through eight do not meet the minimum frontage requirements for commercial developments. An important factor to note, and you can even kind of tell whenever in the code, which states that, you know, a minimum width of 100 foot for commercial lots, except corner lots, in which it has to be 125 feet for collector streets, or 150 for arterial streets, and 200 feet for expressways, which very much signals that the purpose of our lot frontage on, for commercial lots, is to make sure that we have adequate spacing for driveways. And that's why there's a higher frontage requirement, whenever you have a higher classification of road, you know, collector is less than arterial, that's less than expressway. And that's because the more driveways you have, it's more conflict points, and it's dangerous, and then it also kind of provides more congestion onto a road, and we want, you know, expressways to be as free-flowing and high-speed as possible. And so that is the basis on why we have minimum lot frontage standards for commercial lots. And in this case, we are recommending approval of this variance with these substandard lots, that you can see the current lot configuration, with the condition of the cross-access easement. So they are proposing to plat a cross-access easement. We have worked with Tech Dot, they will, are proposing only two driveways to the entire eight lots along North Navarro Street. And so with those two driveways being limited by Tech Dot and the cross-access, it's functioning as a much larger lot, as a single-development lot. And, but, but allows, with this cross-access easement, it also allows them to have individual lot ownerships for the different stores and restaurants that are proposing to go in that. So for that reason, we do recommend approval of these variance, of the variances for the smaller lots, conditioned upon the cross-access easement that you see reflected, or highlighted in red on this plat. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Julie, when we give a variance like this for a commercial property, where we're going to allow it to be smaller than what the code is, does that also affect the size of the building that can be put on that property? Because I know, isn't there like a percentage of the lot is a maximum footprint?
Right, so we've already applied all of the setbacks. So, you know, if you have a smaller lot, then you have, you know, setbacks take up a more, a higher percentage of the lot, so yes. But the scale of, you know, once you apply those setbacks, and you have a cross-access, I mean, the scale's still appropriate for the lot. And the proposed, we have actually site plans all ready for Taco Bueno, McAllisters, and I believe Arby's officially submitted, which will be using three of those eight lots. And they are able to meet all of the other requirements without any other variances.
Any other questions at the staff on the staff report? At this time, then, I'd like to open the, this variance item for a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? Yes, sir, please come up and give us your name and what you want to tell us.
Okay, my name is William Troyer. I have the home that backs up to this commercial. My big concern is the traffic that's already on Bingham Road. I know right now, seven and eights not to be developed, will be, but right now, there's so much congestion down there by JJ's and, and the hamburger place, Jim's Big Burger. I mean, you come through there around lunchtime, and there'll be traffic, I mean, people parked where you're down to one lane, trying to get back and forth. And I can't tell you how many wrecks have been down there. So it looks like they're, excuse me, they're going to be opening a road back there, and I'm sure eventually that'll be developed. And I think even now, that maybe traffic could be increased, just from what, what's coming now. That really needs to be looked at, because there's so much traffic comes from, from all parts of the city, even around the Health Plex. I've followed people, because I, I live right there, so I come, and they're taking that shortcut to come out right there. But there's, there's already light poles missing from wrecks, and I don't think a month goes by without a wreck right there. People trying to come out of Exxon Station, and it's just really, really congested already. And by adding another street here, it looks like what's going to happen, I just, I just can't imagine what's going to happen down there. And right now, since they opened up the new Benavides Road, I think it is?
Plaza de Benavides.
Yeah, it has backed up traffic. A lot of people want to go that way, and it's fine and dandy, I was looking forward to that. But now it's made it even harder to get out there already. So it's really a congestion right there. So I strongly recommend a traffic light there or something, or look at that, maybe cutting off Bingham somewhere, where people can't come from all parts of the city through there for a shortcut. But it's, it's a dangerous thing already. That'd be really my biggest concern, but, but the whole thing.
I appreciate your comments.
Okay.
I know that area, you're right, it's, it's congested. I was at Slick's getting my car inspected today, and...
Yeah, yeah, it gets bad.
That is a very congested area.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Anyone else like to comment? Yes, sir.
I'm Johnny Salinas Salifuna, two six Primrose.
Yes, sir.
Where about drainage? I get flooded every time there's a big rain. What are you going to do about drainage there on the lot?
Drainage, drainage in what area, sir?
Two, six Primrose, next to the Mr. Kemp's helicopter hangar, next to that lot, on the third house on Primrose, next to the Valero, used to be Valero. I get all that water on my lot. Some of my neighbors, they put some terraces on their lots, and they put water when it rains a lot on my lot. And I got flooded back in the...
You're concerned that this development, this subdivision, would add to that?
Yes, the drainage, that's what I'm worried about.
Okay.
That's all.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the, yes ma'am, please?
I'm Carolyn Seals, and our property is 801 Bingham, which is right across the, the road that they're talking about widening, I guess. This gentleman talked about the traffic from the restaurants, but if you go down that road in the summertime, there's a swimming pool, a public swimming pool, and there's kids on that road all the time, walking, riding their bicycles. And like he said, this is going to be additional traffic that's going to make it more hazardous for these kids trying to get to the, the pool.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Yes, sir, please.
My name is Brett Paul, I'm with Victoria Equity Group, we're the owner and developer. I guess to address a couple of things, the gentleman mentioned the drainage, we're certainly having our engineers make all the proper calculations, and, and that's something that we have to comply with, with code, and make sure that all of our uses and the surface area and all that stuff, you know, complies to manage the drainage. And regarding traffic, right now, we're not planning to build the road from the front lots to the back. There's certainly already access there, and there was before. We're not sure what the uses on the, the back are. You know, I think it will be some sort of commercial, it probably wouldn't justify the types of uses that are on the front of the lot by virtue of being off the street, so...
You're talking about the larger lots?
Yeah.
Yeah, eight and, eight, seven and eight.
Right. So it's tough to say at this point, but in the, in the short term, to the lots on Navarro, there will not be a street in the back. That's shown on the plan... That's shown on the plan long-term. Again, we don't, we don't really know what's, what's going to happen or go there. Could be one use on the back, could possibly be two. It's tough to say at this point. So, you know, I guess in the short term, to say there's not going to be a drive from the front lots through the back of the property.
Through the back, through Bingham.
So. Other than that.
Those two back lots are basically what Burger King was, right? Essentially?
No.
Or is it kind of, because I'm kind of cattywampus?
Yeah, it's, we combined three lots. So it was, most of that was the, I guess.
The city's building.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
That was ugly, I hate to say it, but that was an ugly building.
Glad it's gone.
Glad it's gone.
Happy answer, any other questions as well?
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address us in the public hearing? At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing and open this up for discussion with the council. Comments?
I mean, you have the concerns. My question is, if you can remind us again, you said that the plans, I'm trying to think of the word right now, I just went blank.
We have received some site plans.
Contendencies, contentions.
Right, so we're recommending approval of variance contingent upon the access easement, which is shown on the document. So if this, you know, gets approved and moves forward, this is the document that would be, of course, filed and shows those access easements.
I mean, it's showing it, but what you're saying is that the highway department's going to have to approve it or?
They've actually already approved those two.
They have?
Two driveways. And so, yes, this is, you know, we're, because you're seeing the drawing, you know, that's what it is, but it's just formalizing, you know, telling y'all that we recommend, our approval and what we communicated to the developer was that we would only recommend approval with that cross-access. A few other points is drainage is, our engineering department, our public works department is very much aware of drainage, and they did take a special look at this in the site plan review process, that drainage and the requirements for those is, goes through the site plan process, in which the engineers, of course, have to provide a lot of data post and pre-development runoff versus post-development runoff, and what are the, what's the, how the developer is going to capture that water and handle that. And so our engineering department, again, was aware of that and took a close look at drainage for these lots. Also, lastly, you know, Bingham Road had some, had some development activity south of the swimming pool, kind of between this and the pool. And I continue to receive a lot of sidewalk covenant waiver requests, which is basically, I have the authority to waive sidewalk requirements and open ditch roads. And because of the traffic on this, I have held fast and denied all of those requests, which those property owners aren't too happy with me about. But you have seen some sidewalk development, and hopefully, as those properties develop, you will see sidewalks between this driveway and the pool to help push some of that activity onto the sidewalk and off of the street. Going a little bit south, the traffic does definitely kind of drop off a little bit more.
And that's because, that's a concern, you know, of course, we look at safety, I forget this, Mike. Safety, and then for his children, and I think, you know, I know some of us, I live in it, I take that route a lot, because coming from where I live at, and the congestion that it could, that it could be. And so that is a concern, the safety concern. But if we're saying that there is plans in place, and you, like you say, because of your direction of not waiving sidewalks, so they can be permitted there.
Or mandated, basically, when anyone makes that change, they have to put the sidewalk in. Right.
So the children have us, safety measures.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I so move.
To approve the variance? I'm sorry.
I can use yours.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
A second's been made. All in favor, say aye, please?
Aye, please.
Any opposed? Not seeing any, the motion passes. At this time, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we're on the consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at the meeting minutes? Any changes or corrections?
Seen far to be.
And then also on there, what we just voted on would be approving the final plat for the Bronson addition and the final plat for the Texas Hinton subdivision. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we have the monthly development report, please.
So we continue to be pretty busy with site plans and plaits. We received three minor plaits. The most notable one is the Enchanted Gardens subdivision, which is the new proposed apartment complex on North Bin Jordan. We received two major plaits. You should see the preserve at the next meeting. Still had issues, and so it was postponed for the following meeting. Bronson, you just, of course, approved. And then we had three major site plans, North Town Shopping Center, Bedex Ground Package Systems, and Springwood Medical Park, subdivision three. This is our monthly permit activity, and you can see that we continue to be well above last year. Of course, last year, we were just starting out on a pandemic, so I expect this trend of being well above last year's activity to continue. But as you can see, we issued 204 MEP permits and 167 other permits with a value of 4.8 million.
Julie, how are we doing compared to pre-COVID numbers? Are we starting to get back to what we would consider normal?
Yes, I would say that this is, is very normal. We were actually pretty slow even pre-COVID. You know, we were really, really busy, 14, 15, 16, and then, well, 16, the spigot turned off, and we were really slow. And then, of course, Hurricane Harvey kind of triggered us into a lot of rebuilding activities. So our numbers were really high, but I don't know how much of that was really economy-based and how much was recovery. And then we had a little bit of a slow year in 18, and we're going back, definitely hitting kind of more normal numbers, and then COVID hit. And so we're not dead during COVID, but definitely slower. And so I think we're definitely kind of exceeding all that and potentially approaching, you know, you go for shale days, activity. Not quite there yet, but.
That's a positive sign. That's great.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or anything from anyone on the commission? Thank everyone for being here tonight. Appreciate it.
Glad to see everybody face to face.